Welcome to the November 16, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Closed session. Madam Clerk?
Closed session for today, Tuesday, November 16. Item 1, pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 Conference with County Designator Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Item 2, pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 Conference with Legal Counsel Re-existing Litigation: California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan at All, Santa Saus County Superior Court Case Number CB-20-001720.
Any public comment on any one of those items or all of them?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into closed session. Welcome back to the November 16, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please stand up to the plenum?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have a report out on closed session, please?
Report of closed session for today, November 16. Item 1, pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 Conference with County Designator Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins, Nick Marvin, and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organization: Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association (CCPSA), Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisor Union. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item 2, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 Conference with Legal Counsel Re-existing Litigation: California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan at All, Santa Saus County Superior Court Case Number CB-20-001720. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Lisa Medina.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, respective Board members, CAO Von Motta, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, the Environmental Management Agency. Today, I have a few announcements. First and foremost, I would like to thank our friends at Calaveras Animal Services Focus who do so much for our animals and our community. I would also like to thank our community volunteers who walk our dogs daily. Last month, our volunteers contributed over 372 hours of their precious time to walk our pups. We are looking and pleading for, to our community, for more volunteers to help walk our dogs daily. If you are interested, please visit our animal services website and click on our volunteer box to check out information and qualifications. You can also call me directly, and I would be more than happy to assist you with any of your questions. I can be reached at 209-754-6744, and that is my direct line. My second announcement is we will be having a free drive-through microchip clinic on Saturday, December 4, from 9 to noon. That microchip clinic is free. We just ask that you bring a can of cat food or dog food, and maybe even some treats or a toy in order to get that microchip. But if you don't, that's okay, too. We'll still give your animal a microchip. We are hoping to participate in a future event to help our community animals and their humans. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further staff comments?
None at this time.
Thank you. Public health update. Informational item: Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Corey Allen.
All of that to unmute so I could say good morning, Chairman Stoppa, members of the Board, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. With me today, of course, I have our Health Officer, Dr. Lomene Ramirez, and our Public Health Deputy Director, Colleen Rodriguez. I did not notice if Doug Archer was able to join us, but we will look forward to that update should he be able to. So today's November 16. Why don't we move forward and give us the numbers? We have 4,125 confirmed cases of COVID-19 here in Calaveras County, 23 active cases, and one active hospitalization at this time. The eligible population that is fully vaccinated is currently 53.62. I know we spoke about this the last time we updated. That number's dropped slightly because we now have a broader population. We now have the population that includes our 5- to 11-year-olds who are now eligible for vaccine. We've conducted over 71,000 tests, and always sad to report, we have received 85 deaths due to COVID-19 to date. The percent of our eligible youth, and this figure is only going to capture that teenage population from 12- to 17-year-olds, is up at 29.06. That number also has changed slightly because that denominator changed when we included our 5- to 11-year-olds in that grouping. Percentage of eligible statewide, this is what is so important for us here to remember, is 60.62% of our eligible teenagers that have received a vaccine and are fully vaccinated. We are actively pivoting every time we have greater needs. Right now, we have a need to make sure that we continue to provide contact trace and investigation for those impacted by COVID-19. So we have contracted with the California Department of Public Health for contact trace and investigation staff. We hoped to have five CT and CI staff. That was delayed slightly by another week, and that's because there is so many counties that are pulling on state resources. But we are now making this big change by bringing in state resources, which means when we receive phone calls, we may see that on our phone, that phone number will not necessarily be a Calaveras County member. This service, we hope to have in place for several months, and that will be sort of a moving target based on several factors. But we do encourage people to respond to those phone calls as we do reach out. A local recruitment is also underway. We have limited response to fill positions to continue to provide this important service to our community. The pediatric vaccine that is now available to our 5- to 11-year-olds, we are one of those counties that is still waiting on a vaccine. As of 4:00 p.m. yesterday, still no vaccine was counted or provided to us by the State of California. Once we have those in place, we will be able to report on the locations, then that vaccine will be provided. It is a different method of distribution, so we will make sure that the VAX ban has child-focused timeframes so that we can provide a safe environment for children, but those other locations will be identified and recorded publicly once we secure them. Vaccines and testing continue to happen through our vaccine ban, but I do want to provide an update to both you as a Board and to our community that as the year ends, this ban will likely phase out. This is something that was a time-limited, state-issued service. We are currently providing this service at great cost to our local powers and public health department, and so we will phase out as we near year end. We will likely need to work through our primary care providers and pharmacies to continue or deceive vaccine and testing moving forward. So what does this mean? It means right now is a great time to go ahead and get either your first one and two doses or to get that booster shot that you might have been waiting for. Testing and vaccine, you know, we want to make sure that people realize we are, right now, still allowing testing. That's on a walk-in. The vaccine, it's really critical that people go onto myturn.ca.gov to register for their vaccine. Things have gotten a bit more complicated, especially as we move into boosters because of the crossover and the mixing. So the best way, and right now, the only way, to get that vaccine is to preregister. Today, you can find the van at the Health and Human Services Agency main building here on St. Charles Street. Our timing throughout each day is from 9:30 in the morning till 6:30 in the afternoon, and you can see on the screen that we will be in Valley Springs on Thursday at the grocery outlet, and then throughout the week, we hit Murphy's West Point, McCollum Hill. So just a reminder that, again, going to, that My Turn is really going to help. I wanted to make sure that this Board and our community is aware that we locally are still following all of our state guidelines, both the requirements and the recommendations that are set by the state. This applies to all extracurricular activities that are operated or supervised by schools, and this can include those things that happen outside of school hours: sports, band, chorus, any clubs. Masks continue to be required for all persons during indoor sports, and the only workaround is whether or not there's a choking hazard that would be sort of in play, and that has to be determined by the American Academy of Pediatrics. So we don't have any workaround of that other than that. So the playing of musical instruments, I know we continue to hear from our public concerns around that. If that can't be done with a face covering, say a wind instrument, then there are some options. Those activities can occur outdoors. There are modified face coverings and bell coverings, maintaining six feet of distance, and of course, the option to perform at least weekly screening, testing with a PCR test. So that's how we just want to make sure that we are staying consistent with the state. There's always the OptinServe testing sites for those interested. We do report out on this each and every time we report. That's at Semara and Amador. And going to myturn.gov, you can still see those overview vaccine, this is testing. Those are on the websites that I've shown. So the resources, I want to remind everybody, we have a COVID hotline, 754-2896. We have our website, which is always as updated as possible. And with that, I wanted to see if there's anything that Dr. Ramirez would like to add to.
No further additions. Just wanted to, again, reiterate that we are following state and local guidance, not just our Calaveras.
Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Ms. Callaway.
Ms. Allen, on the school and the extracurricular activities, since we've seen what so far two of our school districts have done, I mean, who monitors that? And if their school boards choose not to follow it, then is the county even involved?
That's an excellent question. As a school decision, the county is not involved. And I will see if Colleen Rodriguez has a more robust response than that. It is something that, it's a watch and wait as far as I'm concerned, but Ms. Rodriguez, if you have anything different to add?
Hopefully, y'all can hear me. I don't know why my video isn't coming on. Sorry about that. So we have been working really closely with the school board. We have been with the, with, not the school board, I'm sorry, with CCE. We unfortunately do not have any control over what the school boards do and don't do. We have definitely given very strong recommendations through the superintendent of the county. From this point, it will be something that the state will have to address. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Ms. Allen, I have one more. I know I wrote you this, but I'm still not clear on the active cases. When it shows, I mean, we know, I can't remember, 40-something that you showed us. That's new cases over a specific period of time. It's not the total number of people in the county that have COVID as of that reporting period, correct?
Right. So what we report out on, on active cases, would be individuals that did come through as having a positive case. When we get that listing, there's always a grouping in the queue or on deck where our public health staff is then doing an outreach to determine, do they reside in Calaveras County? You know, we are a county where there is a lot of addresses that may or may not be an active address, or a permanent residency may reside elsewhere. So we do qualify them as a local resident before posting that number, especially with having Thursday as a holiday and then a weekend. You might see that the number has dropped, because I did see that it was 27 versus, say, I think the prior week was 60 or 70. It could very well be that we just simply need to get through that backlog to qualify those individuals. When people answer their phone and respond, we're able to get that data more quickly. But yeah, you did notice a little bit of a change there, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Can I just go back real quick to Supervisor Callaway's question regarding any ramifications by the school? So this has been an issue that's been addressed on our many meetings with the state. We've been reminded that the advice and guidelines given by the state with regards to schools isn't necessarily without consequences. There are potential financial sanctions that the state can take, and that's not even to mention the personal sanctions and liability that lay among the decision-makers for any potential negative effects that affect our students and our community. So this is all an uncharted territory. Lord forbid that anything bad happened to anybody, but we are all public figures, and we all have accountability. And our rationale for making decisions from the Department of Public Health is for the safety and well-being of all of our community, not just their students, but all of our community. We want everybody to be as safe and healthy as possible.
Well, I have no intention of punishing our children. I hope the state doesn't either for decisions made by adults. Any further Board comments or questions? Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. Is there anything further, Dr. Ramirez or Ms. Allen?
I do want to point out that Jennifer Archer has joined us, and so we might want to see if Mr. Archer with Markham Medical Center has anything to add. Do you need to go?
Thanks, Ms. Allen. I don't, well, first, I apologize for being late. My previous meeting ran a little over, but let's see. For the hospital, we have two inpatients today. We were up to, well, we had a peak of six about four weeks ago, but we've dropped back down and been hovering about two to three inpatients for the past week or so. ER visits related to COVID have definitely declined over the past, you know, two to three weeks. We did see a very slight increase in staff going out. In a few cases, they were actually vaccinated and tested positive, but that's also went down. We have one staff personnel at the present time. And the vaccine mandate process is essentially complete. We have a team staff that has been out on a medical loop of absence unrelated to COVID that still haven't completed the process yet, only because they've been out. And at the end of the day, we have lost two staff members that have decided that they don't want to be vaccinated, and they've been put on unpaid administrative leave for 90 days. At the end of that 90 days, if they have still held and decided not to be vaccinated, they would be, their employment would be ended with our institution, and we would black and fill those positions. So all in all, two staff members, you know, although we obviously would not like to lose anybody, but just the two is better than the earlier block system. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Thank you, Corey Allen, and thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for your time. Appreciate it. Unless there was something further I missed.
I just wanted to tell everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving and upcoming holiday season. That was pretty much it.
General public comment? Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board is not posted on the consent or regular agendas, may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Any public comment there? Any public comment, Ms. Clerk?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Are there any Board members that would like to pull any items? Staff members or public?
There are no online requests.
I'll entertain a motion.
Is that moved?
Thank you, Mr. Guerimindi.
Second.
A second by Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor? Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. 9:30. Let's move on to our regular agenda. Action item: Health and Human Services Agency conduct a public hearing to receive public comments relating to the return of the Community Development Grant Block Grant Number 20 CDBG-12076, funding in the amount of $250,000 as the Economic Development Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance and General Administration project did not provide any outcomes. Two, authorize the Director of Health and Human Services Agency or designee to approve, sign, and submit the closeout certification of, for Community Development Block Grant Ms. Corey Allen, longtime NOSI.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Corey Allen with the Health and Human Services Agency. Today, we have Lori Adams, our consultant, who's there in the boardroom, who can work with you to sort of walk us through the public hearing today. Lori?
I'm the lone member of your public today. The Board had approved the application for the CDBG, take this off.
If you want, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. They had approved the 20 CDBG application, which included a business administration program as well as a technical assistance program, and both of them were awarded. In addition to that, you also received some CARES Act funding under the CV1 allocation through HCD, at which it gave you additional money, which was a little bit more relevant to what the needs of the businesses were. And essentially, you are currently a little bit overfunded in economic development, and in working with your staff, Kathy Galino, who's going to be taking over and running the ED program for the county, it was determined it was best if we went ahead and declined the contract with the state for the $250,000 and continued forward with the secondary grant as well as the CARES funds to meet the needs of the community. So the process today is just to advise the public, the Board, of what those intentions are, and to take that comment and directive, and then initiate the closeout process on those funds and get them back to the state so they can be reallocated.
Thank you. Is there anything further, Ms. Allen? Board members, any questions?
Just, I apologize, Supervisor Stoppa, if I missed it, but did we open the public hearing?
No, I didn't, and thank you for catching it, Ms. Edwards. I'm opening the public meeting, and I'll close it out before we vote.
Nothing further from me, Chairman.
Any, any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the Board. Any further things before I close it? I'll be closing the public hearing and entertaining, is this the, sorry, it's a public hearing. I just read it out loud. I want to make sure. It's an action item, so I'll entertain a motion. If there's no motion...
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions, since my colleagues are silent on this item. We're returning $250,000. I think part of the problem that we have is we're returning it. It doesn't happen very often.
That's why I'm here.
My question is, we're returning $250,000. Did we?
Respectfully, Supervisor Tufanoli, is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Did we, did we spend any staff time? Did this cost us any money?
No.
This $250,000? Did we exert, as you said, you worked with Kathy, so there was no staff time involved in here. It's not costing us anything since it was back?
Correct.
Okay. Rita, you have questions?
No, I guess I find it sad that we don't, we couldn't reach out or didn't have clients or businesses that were five or fewer that were willing or able to meet the criteria. So was it the criteria that was difficult?
So the funding has not been provided outreach at this point. The business assistance program dollars that you have will cover those businesses as well. The challenge is that if you have both funds, then they compete, and one's very limited, very restricted, and the other one is more open and accessible.
Okay. I think that last caveat about them competing and the funds remaining are the ones that are for five or fewer, or there's no limit on number of employees.
The other item that is a concern that you want to make sure that you're aware of when managing and implementing these programs is that if you don't spend your money timely, then you actually have issues accessing future funds. So you want to position yourself to where you aren't being held back for not expending funds so that you can continue to feed that program if it is successful and continue to access the money.
Okay. I know we've been a recipient of funds not spent elsewhere, so I can...
Yeah, it is, it's a balancing act. So this move is in order to ensure that it's setting you up for ensuring that you can meet those goals.
Thank you.
Mr. Guerimindi.
I'm assuming that this is more a question to our CAO that we have... I'm assuming that, um, this is more a question to our CAO that we have tried every which way to make this happen. I believe somewhere north of 80% of our businesses are employing less than five people in our county, or at least our region, if I remember all the EDA documents. So before we give this back, have we run everything to ground? I understand the timing issue of getting expenditures and flexibility, but, you know, giving back money is pretty, as Gary put forward, is pretty antithesis to the way we like to go.
The Administrative Office has not been engaged in outreach with respect to this program. Certainly, if it's the Board's direction to do so, we can work with Health and Human Services and Economic Development and our Housing Coordinator in order to see, however consistent with the recommendations that were brought by them last week, this is another element of that conversation. My concern with having this item before the board today candidly is that, given the conversation that we had last week and that remaining questions as it relates to that particular funding source, this might be premature. However, we have before us our expert with whom we've worked for many years. I'm not exactly sure how many.
Ten plus, yeah.
It's a really, been a really long time, and so I do indeed, as it relates to this particular funding source, take, recommend, accepting that recommendation so that we can move forward with the other available funding sources.
I certainly respect Ms. Adams, and we've worked together, and she's very good at what she does. I am concerned because economic, this does say economic development throughout it, and economic development does report to the Administrative Office.
Yes.
So the fact that you're not part of this conversation is, is a concern.
Our Economic Development Coordinator has been part of this process.
So we've run this to ground?
That is not what I said.
Okay. So we have not run this to ground?
Um, our Economic Development Coordinator is not available at the moment. I have not personally run this to ground. If you would like to table this item, we can certainly bring it back to December 7th meeting.
I'll leave that up to the board.
If we did table this until December 7th, are we still within the parameters of not showing, having anything against us? Do we have a timeframe still available?
Yes.
We do.
I don't have a problem with approving this because we have the CARES Act funding that includes employers of, it doesn't matter how many employees they have, and we have the funding to do that. And if we haven't been able to use it for whatever reason, the employers who have less than five or more than five, there's still funding available for them to use. I mean, yeah, philosophically, we don't like giving money back, but I don't think that our business community is going to be at a loss because we return these funds, because there's other funds that supplant that.
Ms. Fulendorf.
I understand that recommendation, but I am concerned about having to send back this kind of money. I guess one of my biggest questions, why would we accept the money if we don't have a plan? And given the enormous partnerships that we supposedly have in the county with the Visiting Spirit, the Chamber, the Destination Angel Camp, there's a lot of other partners also regionally, what happened? Where was, where was that failure to, to move forward? And now we're stuck in this place of having to give this money. I don't think it's not the lack of businesses and to, I question the outreach because we're supposedly supposed to be pretty outreach in, over the last couple of years with everything that's been successful. I just am concerned and question the ability, it questions to be even entertaining this in the future if we don't have the ability of staff to do this work.
I guess...
Or come up with a game plan, a structure to get this done.
I guess I don't read on, sorry.
For a small county to be giving away like this.
I guess I don't see it that way because we've applied for different pots of money, hoping that we would get them, and we got them both. We got the Community Development Block Grant, and we got the Block Grant for the CARES funding. So there's only so much that I think that we can do with the resources we have, including the outreach, that I would rather just give it back and let, that shows good faith because we still have a pot of money we have to deal with. And we go after funding, hoping we can get things. We don't always necessarily have detailed plans on how it can be spent because then you're spending resources developing something that you might or might not get funding for. So I would rather have maybe somebody else use it, and that we have the opportunity in the future to go back at chosen good faith that if we can't spend it in a short period of time, and then we have other funding out there we're not spending.
And I can provide a little more clarity. I'm sorry, Amanda. I can provide a little more clarity to that because your questions are very relevant. What we are dealing with is when the money was applied for under the 2020 contract, we weren't anticipating CV funds at that time. So those programs were put in in good faith to move your, your economic development forward. And she has a plan, and she, you know, she's moving forward with that. When we got to the actual contracts being released, we applied for those funds at the end of 2019, the beginning of 2020, we just got the contracts. So it took the state that long to process because of being hit sideways with the CARES Act, their lack of resources, et cetera. Then we went in and applied under the CARES Act, and Kathy had a completely different program outlined to kind of build bridges between the different needs. But it wasn't approved, and so we had to rewrite that program in order to access, which then kind of overlapped some of the funds under 2020. So CARES gives us more flexibility than the actual CDBG program does. So by keeping those funds, it allows us more flexibility, and we have now the multiple funding sources. So when she, when she went back through and evaluated those, she felt that this was the money that was not going to be utilized, we were going to be struggling with, that it was better to send that back to keep us competitive moving forward. CARES Act funds have to be spent in 24 months. We get 36 months with the 2020. So spending 50% of that and getting us additional funds, you know, that flow makes it a little easier. So to your question of cycling, we were held back, and now it's all flooded in at the same time.
That's, that's my, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Because that's my understanding of it. A lot of, lot of carts were put before the horse in 2019 with our, everything changing with COVID.
Yes.
And everything. They're like, we'll give you the rules later.
Yeah.
And then the rules come in more restrictive in certain ways. We're like, how do we, how do we make this work? And, but you found another avenue with money that actually made it work for the time being.
Correct.
I'm, that, that's the way I understand it. I mean, it's always disconcerting when we're giving money back.
Yeah, it's a pit in the stomach.
But, 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 uh, there, there's real reasoning from your explanation there.
Okay.
So, so the choice for the board here is, do we want to, uh, table it until the December meeting? Or do we want to go the route that Ms. Callaway was speaking of? I'll entertain a motion.
The motion that we submit the closeout certificate for the Community Development Block Grant because we have, still have, we have funds that we can spend that are much more inclusive.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that based on staff recommendations that have been involved in this, you know what's going on, so I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Taufneli. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
Find project exempt, find project exempt from SEQA, conduct a public hearing, and adopt a resolution to establish California Land Conservation Contract Agricultural Preserve Number 388 totaling 232 acres for Ken L. Stacy et al. I'm opening the public hearing. Ms. Gina Catherine.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. We just have today a few house cleaning items. The first one is, just as previously explained, it is a California Land Conservation Application submitted by Kenton Stacy and his sisters Pamela and Devon Marion. This is to establish Contract 388 for a total of 232 acres comprised of two assessor parcel numbers, 503018 and 503019, located at 9573 Rock Creek Road, approximately three miles southeast of the town of Milton, lying west of the Salt Springs Reservoir. Back on February 28th, 1972, the County Board of Supervisors established Ag Preserve Contract 127 for A.F. Ripley for land located in the Milton and Salt Springs Valley area of the county. Over time, portions of the original preserve were divided in interest under Board of Supervisors Resolution 71226. Being that the contract ran with the land and all successors, the county allowed property owners to maintain the same agriculture preserve while independently reporting income from the production of their unique operations, but leaving a fragmented parcels under separate ownership under one contract. Currently, Board of Supervisors Resolution 75-189 requires that two or more parcels be contiguous and in common ownership to be established as an agriculture preserve. In 2020, upon the purchase of property near Milton, Clifford and Sherry Overmeyer applied to the county ag commissioner to enter 411-plus acres of their own, of land into their own preserve. During the review of the Overmeyer application, it was noted that 334.22 acres of the 411 acres proposed for Ag Preserve 377 was encumbered by established Ag Preserve Contract 127. Then, on August 25th, 2020, Ag Preserve Contract 377 was established for the Overmeyers while simultaneously disestablishing Ag Preserve Contract 127. Unaware that Ag Preserve Contract 127 included other parcels in addition to the parcels purchased by the Overmeyers, upon recommendation by staff and the Agriculture Advisory Committee, the Board of Supervisors inadvertently took action to disestablish several parcels belonging to others, one of which is the parcel, which, one of which are parcels that are subject to this application we're discussing today. So as previously mentioned, this land has continuously been in agricultural production since 1972. As recent as 2020, Mr. Stacy has reported to the County Agriculture Commissioner a gross annual income from his cattle operation of 20 head to be $14,986. Improvements on the subject property include a barn corrals fencing as well as a single-family residence. Scott Onetto, our Calaveras County Farm Advisor, completed a feasibility study for the subject property primarily being utilized as cattle grazing. This study estimates the land is capable of producing an annual gross income of $29.70, $29.70 per acre exceeding the minimum $2,000 annual income requirement to be in the Ag Preserve. The County General Plan designates this land within the, within this proposed preserve as resource production. The resource production, as you know, designates, designation identifies those lands capable and primarily used for agriculture operations, timber production, and/or mineral resource production. This category includes lands with conservation easements, critical habitat areas, agriculture preserves, as well as timber production. Being that the land was already under an Ag Preserve contract, the property in question is already zoned AP, signifying the land is under California Land Conservation Contract with the county. Since we inadvertently disestablished Ag Preserve 127, we need to reestablish this land as its own Ag Preserve contract in order for them to continue. The, this application is supported by your appointed Agriculture Advisory Committee as well as your Agricultural Commissioner. This application comes before you with the recommendation to approve Contract 388 for three, 232 acres of land. Are there any questions?
Is the landowner or applicant have any comments?
They're not online.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Anything else?
I have the board and I think you approved this. So, I mean, there's nothing...
You approved it, you're in agreement with it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. You're in agreement with this amendment?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with it, and I asked the board to consider it.
Public comment.
There is no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
Move.
I'll second.
Thank, thank you. Motion by Ms. Fulendorf, a second by Mr. Taufneli. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Ms. Catherine, don't go anywhere. Item 20, resolution, planning. Find project exempt from SEQA, conduct a public hearing, and adopt a resolution to establish California Land Conservation Contract Agriculture Preserve Number 389 totaling 104.48 acres for Kathy Tillis, trustee. Ms. Catherine, I'm opening the public hearing.
So this item is just like the previous one. We've left this land abandoned, so to speak, with the disestablishment of Agriculture Preserve 127. So again, Mrs. Tillis has submitted a California Land Conservation Application to the County Agriculture Commissioner's Office, and this number will be 389 totaling 104.48 acres of land comprised of one assessor parcel number, 503014, located at 9064 Rock Creek Road, approximately three miles southeast of the town of Milton, lying west of Salt Springs As recent as 2020, Kathy Tillis reported to the Agriculture Commissioner's Office a gross annual income from her cattle operation of 17 head to be $8,797.13. Improvements on the subject property include a barn corrals, perimeter fencing, two wells, and one single-family residence. Scott Onetto, Calaveras County Farm Advisor, completed a feasibility study of the subject property primarily being utilized as livestock grazing. His study estimates the land has the capability of producing a gross annual income of $29.70 per acre, thus exceeding the minimum $2,000 annual income required to be in the agriculture preserve. This, just as the previous application, the County General Plan designates this land as resource production. as resource production. And again, just as the previous application, this land is also zoned Ag Preserve already, signifying that the land is currently in the Williamson Act. In order to remain in the Williamson Act, we have to reestablish this land with its own contract. This application as well is supported by your Agriculture Advisory Committee and your agricultural commissioner. And again, this application comes to you with the recommendation to approve Contract 389 for 104 acres for Ms. Kathy Tillis.
Thank you. Is the applicant or landowner available on this one?
No. No, they are not.
Public comment?
If, as I said on the last one.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf.
There's no online public comment.
Okay. Any further questions by the board? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move.
A motion by Ms. Fulendorf.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Toffenelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. Thank you very much, Ms. Catherine.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
You too.
Item 21, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. Ms. Turner, you don't have anything to say, do you? I'll entertain a motion by a board member unless there is public comment available for one of the applicants.
Sorry, Chair, yeah, I was just going to say to make sure that, point out that we have two applicants for the commission.
Two applicants, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Are either of them available?
No, they are not.
Okay. Public comment? None?
No online public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion on which applicant serves.
Would you command your regional park advisory board to make a motion for Robert Van Biver?
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Does that motion include the appointment of just the single people on each one of the other committees at the same time?
We can do that. I thought you were just asking for this, verification for this one, and then we could do all three at one time. But I can make the motion that, Command, your regional park advisory board that we appoint Robert Van Biver, and then on the other child, children and families commission, first five, Jenna Setmore, and mental health, Joseph Pinkage.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. We have a motion by Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. I believe this is our redistricting public hearing. We'll take...
Sorry, Chair Stopper, can we, can we take a break?
That's where I was going.
Okay, thank you.
That is one final item.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah. This is where we like to take a break. This is where I'm at. Yes. How long will you need, Ms. Rebecca Turner, for, for a break?
Five minutes. I can go ahead and do the item here. I just was going to set up. I didn't realize how quick it would go, so...
No, no worries. We'll give you five minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Item 22, action item, county clerk, recorder, and registrar of voters introduce an ordinance repealing Ordinance 2993 establishing the 2010 supervisory district boundaries, waive first reading, and authorize summary publication. Ms. Rebecca Turner.
Good morning, board. I just enjoyed the interview, if you know that. So, this ordinance is really a formality for us to pass our resolution adopting the supervisory lines, which we are now planning to do on December 7. Thank you. So, election code 21500 changed, and now we can adopt a, our map lines by resolution rather than by ordinance. Historically, we've always adopted our resolution, adopted our map, redistricting maps by ordinance. And to provide us more time, because an ordinance is a lengthy year process, we did opt to go with resolution, and as a formality, we'd now like to repeal this ordinance and then adopt by resolution. So, that's why I bring this to you today.
Simple explanation, Ms. Turner. Any board questions to that? Pub, public comment?
There is no online public comment?
Mr. Copeland.
This is on the districting?
Yeah, the, it's repealing the ordinance from the 2010 to 993 boundaries.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Toffenelli.
Yeah, I have a question for Sarah. When we do an ordinance, it takes 30 days to go into effect. If we repeal this, will it take 30 days?
Yes, technically, in as much as someone could challenge it within that 30-day period...
Do we have to post it in the newspaper?
Right.
And then 30 days after that posting date goes into effect? Because it's going to affect my next question on that, because we're going to adopt a resolution on the 7.
Right.
If we do, then that, that won't take effect until this ordinance?
No, so the, so the resolution will, presuming that the board does pass a resolution on December 7, adopting a new map, that will take effect right away. This is, I could make the argument that because the board is mandated by state law to redistrict every 10 years, I could make the argument that this is a little bit of a formality repealing the 2010 district lines. As Ms. Turner mentioned, in the past, the board has always adopted the new maps via ordinance, and every time they do that, that ordinance will say, oh, and by the way, we're repealing the one from 10 years ago. You can't repeal an ordinance via resolution. So, just to kind of cross the Ts and dot the Is, we are asking the board to adopt this resolution formally rescinding the prior ordinance, but the new resolution will take effect right away.
Okay, so, so this ordinance will be in place until, even though we're rescinding it now, will be in place until December 7 when we do a resolution? Otherwise, what I'm hearing you saying, does it necessarily take 30 days? Are we going to be for the next two weeks without boundaries?
No, so today, so today's introduction, waiving the first reading, it's not adoption. This will come back to the board for adoption at a subsequent meeting, and then there is that 30-day waiting period.
Thank you.
So, we will always have maps and boundaries in place, I promise.
I just wanted to get that clear.
Yes.
So, you understand this going on. Thank you.
Unless there's any other board questions, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Toffenelli?
I will, Mr. Chair. I move this item as presented by staff recommendations.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Fulendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. We have, do we have to wait for the 11?
No, it says already be the active conclusion of the general.
I think it's 11:00 a.m., or if another item is ongoing at 11, then we can conclude that item and then start, but we do need to wait until 11 because that is how it was published.
Right. Last time it worked out nicely, this time we're a little bit early.
Yeah. You can't always predict it exactly.
We'll be back at one minute till 11. Redistricting public hearing. We turn, Susan?
Thank you. No worries.
Redistricting public hearing. This hearing will commence at 11:00 a.m. or immediately after the conclusion of an E-item being discussed or acted upon at 11:00. Item 23, informational item, county clerk, recorder, and registrar of voters, conduct a public hearing and receive a presentation regarding the 2021 redistricting process and provide staff direction regarding map alternatives. I will open the public hearing and hand it over to you, Ms. Rebecca Turner.
Good morning. I'm just going to go briefly through what we've done to date. So, on our website, we still have an overview of the process, the timeline, community mapper, where the public can submit community of interest maps, and the draft map viewer, where all alternate drafts that were viewed throughout this process are available, as well as map six, which we're currently looking to adopt on December 7. And you can also find all the past public hearing videos. Upcoming dates, today we are at our third post-draft map public hearing, hoping to adopt a resolution on December 7 with the current map. The last date that we can adopt the map is December 14. If we adopt December 7, all filing periods open January 3 for petition and lieu, including the supervisory districts, and then we have the June 7 primary election. There are five supervisory districts, each represented by a member of the board. Every 10 years, districts must be redrawn to substantially equal the population. In Calaveras, the Board of Supervisors is responsible for drawing supervisory districts. When drawing, we are taking a grouping of census blocks to create a supervisory district. To date, these are all the communities of interest. We have had no new communities of interest added since the last public hearing. And since last Wednesday, the comments we've received were that the City of Angels approves draft map six from Copper... Some of these were from the time we posted the agenda last Wednesday to Wednesday when we posted the agenda again. Copperopolis stated that they'd like to keep Diamond 20 and Copperopolis within one district. Diamond 20, at least the south side, would prefer to stay within Copperopolis. Also had four comments stating that residents of Copperopolis support draft six. Murphy's Pines could be in either District 3 or 4, but makes sense to be in the same district. We had two comments about Rancho Calaveras, keep Rancho Calaveras genuinely community of interest intact as possible, put all of Rosso Drive in one district together, two people commented with that. Consider a map with the new boundaries following the existing supervisory district boundaries near Valley Springs. And please consider the R map created by the Calaveras County Republican Central Committee, the solution to all the redistricting criteria mandates. In addition to these public comments, since we posted the agenda on Friday, we also had two comments from the Rancho Calaveras area saying that they supported draft map six. Here's our current supervisory district map. And here's draft map six. We have looked at that in some detail. Right now, it stands at a 7.7 deviation. It is splitting the communities of San Andres, Rancho Calaveras, and Valley Hills Estates. I want to caveat that, that Rancho Calaveras, the majority of residents seem to be fine with the current split. However, the map that was submitted as a community of interest is still split with this map, and the Valley Hills Estates is also split based off the community of interest map that was submitted. And then it splits the cities and designated places of San Andres. That's all I have to share today.
I'll bring it back to the board. I think there's one, one other area with the comments on Diamond 20, keeping it as whole. Ms. Fulendorf, that's community of interest with Copperopolis as...
Click. The Diamond 20, after looking at it more closely, we did, we did not look at the census block 77 above the, I don't know what you want to call the, this little handle, and it does split. Diamond 20 is still split from the north and the south side. And I wanted to look into what that would look like. I think there would be, there will be a higher deviation, but with an argument of keeping the community of interest together, I would like to see what that would look like and open, have a discussion with the rest of the board members to look at it further, but...
Doug, can you share your, the map for draft six?
I think we thought we clicked on all the boxes.
On the northwest side, I believe.
The population, or block that surrounds Copper, the 77, by Diamond 20 to the south, yeah, there you go. So, right now, we are the 77 in that population block there. There's 77 residents in there, and the majority of them seem to be part of Diamond 20 itself. So, you're asking for that to be back in District 4. Looking at the popu...
If that's the case, the zero down to the south would also need to go. Sorry for interrupting, Ms. Turner.
So, the change in the overall population deviation to do that would go from 7.68% to 7.71%. That's the major difference, because we're still looking at the highest and lowest population as the deviation, and District 3 would still have the highest population. It would adjust District 5 to be the lowest population, but that would be the major difference.
In the interest of the community of interest of Diamond Springs and under, I mean Diamond 20, and understanding that, you know, that a majority of those residents inside that population block reside in Diamond 20, for the community of interest of it as a whole, I'm personally in favor of dedicating that, and I think that's well within the confines of everything else, as long as we're taking care of a community of interest. But I still would like that zero down below to the south to be added to that.
Definitely.
Not that that's potential, it's an island there.
So, the, the board as a whole, would you like us to move that population block to District 4?
Ms. Coway, are you in favor of that? Ms. Coway, are you in favor of that?
No, if it makes sense.
Mr. Garamindi? Mr. Toffenelli? It makes sense to me. Does it make sense to you, Ms. Follendorf?
Yes, thank you. Doug, will you go ahead and make the adjustment? And then can we...
Oh, there's a couple small little things in there.
What's he talking about?
Right, are they all zeros?
Can we go ahead and run the numbers on that, too? Anything further?
Is there any further board comments?
Thank you.
Jack has me by three.
No, he's got me by three.
No, I'm...
No, he's 61, you're 64.
Yeah, so it flipped.
61, 64. Oh, the totals.
Will you still need me? Will you still need me? I'm 64.
Can you hold it just for a second, so I can try to read it?
I can't see it either way.
Mr. Chair, can I walk over and take a peek?
Right. Could we, could we open those numbers up a little larger for us, just for the time being, especially when it comes to the population? On the left, the left total number?
There's not actually like a zoom-in function. Yeah. I can read them to you, but...
Right. Oh, I may need you to do that for me, so. High-side impaired here.
There's not a difference?
The 7.71.
7.71.
Yes. We went from 7.68 to 7.71.
I mean, in the interest of the community of interest, in the interest of the community of interest, I believe I'm comfortable with that personally. I think the board said they were. So is there anything, any other concerns right off the bat, or should I call for public comment and give you all a moment? Public comment. Mr. Copeland? Still, good morning.
Good morning. Ralph Copeland, Copperopolis, D4. I'd like to thank Ms. Turner and her staff for putting together an excellent project or program. It's a lot of work, and we in Copperopolis really appreciate your hard work and efforts. The folks I've talked to, and hopefully they've responded, are to support draft six, and including the addition from Supervisor Follendorf, that wraps up Copperopolis and the community of interest. Now I think we should be able to begin our community plan. So hopefully Supervisor Follendorf, with their new district, revised district, will be ready to put that community plan together for Copperopolis. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any online comments?
Yes.
Hi, this is Janet Sterling from Diamond 20 in Copperopolis, and I just wanted to thank the board for listening to Diamond 20 and Copper and putting us in D4, because as I stated in the last two meetings, we definitely feel we are a part of Copper. And I really also want to greatly thank Supervisor Follendorf for listening to myself and the community and working closely with us in making this possibility a reality. So thank you all so much. I know it's a difficult process, but we really appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Further comment?
There is no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board for any other concerns. Ms. Coway?
Ms. Turner, on the community of interest, I think we should just include Vallecito on the list, just so the community knows that there is a split. I was just looking at the back page.
As far as I'm aware, Vallecito is not split based off of how it's drawn and how they drew their...
I thought we split it. I thought we split it down the highway.
At the highway.
At the highway.
No, we included the parcels of Vallecito to follow the draft, the community of interest submitted.
Yes, but what you...
It's all in District 3 now.
It's all in District 3 now?
Oh, I see. Okay. So we could say there's a split for this parcel. Yes, we could go ahead and do that, but we included the parcels that the community of interest that submitted to me wanted submitted.
So on the south side, that's all together, and we wanted to keep that all together. And then the north side of the highway...
Can you zoom into that any closer, Doug, to show that community of interest?
What we're referencing is Six Mile Village, and then the subdivision across the street, across the highway. That's what she's referencing. I just split between that part of Vallecito.
Got it. Then yes, we can include that as being split.
It's still split where it was previously. We did not change that line, but Vallecito is still split at Six Mile Village and the neighborhood across.
Okay.
Think it's viewpoint, there's the storage facility, that's what we're referencing, is that split at the highway.
Got it. Okay. Then yes, we can include that as it's still being split.
And that was not a change from the previous map, so we just kept the line pretty close on that area from the previous map.
Okay.
Like Six Mile Village never went in D3 before. It never went in D4.
I'm in favor of including that in the information provided as the community of interest that is still marginally split.
Okay.
Is the rest of the board okay with that? It's a yes. Anything further? Ms. Coway? Mr. Toffenelli, are you happy with it as it sits?
I don't think I'd ever be happy with it being split or split.
Right.
Especially San Andreas. Excuse me. Sorry, didn't have my microphone on. But looking at what the options are and what we came up with, it is what it is, so...
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Mr. Garamindi?
I think I'd have to, I think I have to agree with Gary. I mean, I would love to find a better way, but considering what we had to deal with and where the populations are and how they shifted, I think this is the best we're going to get to, so I'm supportive.
Ms. Follendorf?
I agree. I don't think, yeah, I, but thank you for your support with the lines on my district. But I agree with the both of you. I don't think we're ever be happy. But we've got to do what we've got to do. And I think all the work that, and the comments from the public and working on this, it's going to be, I think it's a nice clean map finally.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. So, direction? Direction for the board in this item is to move, will there be a vote needed to move forward with the District 6 as we just, or the map 6?
No, I don't think you need to vote on anything today. It'll just, this is the map that Ms. Turner will be bringing back with resolution on the 7th.
So we, I think we have, the board's been pretty clear. Anything we come up with, we're not going to be happy with, so, you know, this is about the least unhappy as we can be at this time.
Okay, then. So at this point, my plan is to bring a resolution forward on December 7th, adopting this map as our final map. At that time, we'll also bring forward any other public comment that has come to date, and I will post this map to the web and then publish a notice that it is the map to be adopted.
And Ms. Turner, I'd like to reflect what Mr. Copeland said. Thank you for the tremendous amount of work. It's a heavy lift on this item, and all the staff, including Doug and everyone else that has had their hands on, working forward on this, thank you for organizing them and moving it forward the way you have. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you and your staff, too, Rebecca. It's been a long haul. You had to recall election prior to this, and you went right into this, and now you're going into the primary election and all of that, so you're having a full night, you and your staff. Thank you very much for the hard times that you guys have put in and the amount of time that you guys have put in there to get this accomplished. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at expense of the local agency and then make other announcements or report out. Let's start with you, Ms. Follendorf.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marita and I had a very, very long day yesterday. We had to meet, we had to attend, and they were quite long, both of them. We attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency, and got some things accomplished there. A lot of it was closed session. And then we had a LAFCO meeting last night, to which Marita is chair of LAFCO, and I want to thank Marita for her direction at LAFCO last night, being chair. She did a very good job, and she did a good job at Central Sierra, so, thank you, Marita.
I have nothing to report out, and I just want to say thank you, Marita. Mr. Garamindi?
Nothing required to report out.
Last night, part of a very difficult conversation, we discussed the community service districts that LAFCO is required to do for the roads, the CSDs in this county, and some of them don't have, they have one member on their board, one's Pat McCrevey's the only board member, some, there are no board members, they don't have money. It sort of goes to show that decisions we make now have, can have impacts 30 and 40 years down the road, and that's a lot how some of these CSDs came about. We're trying to decide, and we're going to have to maybe talk with Public Works and discuss it as a board and as a LAFCO board, as a Board of Supervisors and a LAFCO board, what we're going to do with some of these CSDs that are struggling, that do not increase their fees, so they're paying the same amount now that they paid 10, 20 years ago, and what are their options? I know Supervisor Follendorf has some critical ones in her district, so I think that's something that we'll have to deal with as a county and as a LAFCO as we move forward, at least in the next, I mean Supervisor Toffenelli and I looked at it a little differently, but it's still something that we're going to have to deal with. Do we allow these CSDs just to flounder? And because they're a CSD, we have to do the audit, a LAFCO audit on them, where if they're a CSA, right, Gary, they don't have to bother with that, but the issue for these road districts is still the same. They don't have the money, they don't have the board members to maintain what they have, and it could fall back on to the county at some point. So that was a very, it was a very interesting conversation last night. More to come.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. With that, thank you, and have a good day.